Yes, I'll call this meeting the order of late six two thousand fourteen.
Dear heaven, Father, just one thing to say, dear God, thank you for the good blessings and life, dear Lord. Just thank you, dear God, for letting us get through another school year of yours to wind down. Dear God, just pray that you be with all our kids, dear Lord, as they go into their final exams and their FBOGs, dear Lord, just have them, dear God, do the best of their abilities, dear Lord. Just pray for our teachers as we go into this last month, dear Lord, we know it's a stressful time, dear God. I just pray, dear Lord, that you'll give them ease, dear Lord, and help their students, dear God, to do the best of their abilities, dear God. Just thank you, dear Lord, for the blessings, dear Lord, for this board, dear God, just be with them, dear Lord, have them as they make decisions, thank our schools, dear God, be with our administration, dear Lord, as they look into that toward next year, dear God, and the decisions they have to make concerning our next school year. Jesus, that's my prayer. Amen.
You made David, okay? I forget about him, okay? Here it goes. Say it again, guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice of God.
So you guys are all getting ready to go compete?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you tell me a little bit about where you're going and what activity you're gonna be doing? Yeah, can you tell me right?
Yeah, we're going to Spenden Lincoln, so, and, um, I'm not, you made this, okay? I forget about it, okay? I'm just joking, okay?
Where are you going, Alex? Where do you have to go to compete?
He's funny, okay? Well, Miss Lawler, he's my boss, Miss Tacy's boss.
Alex, where are you going to compete?
Where are you going to compete?
Where are we going, Franklin?
Where are we going, Franklin?
Uh, Franklin.
Franklin, which you beat or you complete then?
The one hundred meter?
Dash!
All right, let's have the rest of them tell us what they're gonna be doing.
Really?
Thank you, Alex.
Really?
Just tell us.
Um, I'm doing the one hundred and fifty and the hundred meter dash.
Wow, you've got some hormones too. What about yours? Matt?
I'll be in the four by one hundred.
Relay.
Four by one hundred relay and, uh, I don't know.
You must be pretty fast then, huh?
Yeah, I wasn't quite.
All right, good. How about yours? Tell us your name too, I forgot.
Uh, I'm doing, uh, I'm the alternate for the relay. And I do chocolate and one hundred.
All right, good. You'll be good at that.
Yeah.
That gets, that get everybody?
We have Matthew Dockery.
Oh, you're Matthew.
Matthew's gonna be doing the softball throw and the twenty-five meter long.
All right, good, Matthew.
And then at the end of the month, some of the athletes will be going on to the state games to compete and represent Grand County.
All right, good. Well, you guys go learn.
They do it. And they have a little something for Halloween Eve.
Yeah. That's for you.
Well, thank you.
For what?
Good for me.
It's for you. Asante. Thank you. Art Asante.
Oh, I'd like to bring you this, right?
I appreciate that.
And they're at Franklin, right? At the middle school?
Mm-hmm, no, no high school.
Middle school?
It's middle high school, isn't it?
Thank you.
For a special mention?
Yes, Franklin.
It's, uh, eight and eight, I mean, I'm sorry, it starts at nine forty-five, but maybe middle school.
That's me at the middle school. That's back in behind with that new wall over there.
Yes.
I will thank you guys.
David, good job, buddy. You're coming. I'll just give it. You're touched, huh?
Do we have a motion to approve the amendments of the April first meeting?
I make a motion to approve the amendments of the April first meeting.
Is it set?
Set.
I'll take it. Okay, we are, uh, next on the agenda is approval of today's agenda, and we're gonna make some, uh, changes to that before we vote, so.
If you will strike to item G, the CTV level plan, Ms. Anderson will present that in June. I actually have some votes. Under reports and discussion items and also action items, Kila Stewart will present additional field trips for this after-school, summer school program. And then we'll also be adding K procedures for sale of the RHS carpentry house. And L resolution for the authorized use of activity lessons. So those are our checklists.
Terms to action items also. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda with the amendments to it?
A recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll take it. Does not, we have any individuals or groups to address the motion to that? Now, second amendment recognition.
Yeah, at this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Rick Parham. He has brought a group of students, and they, uh, I'd like him to explain why this group is here. And we're very proud of this group, with Mr. Parham and his group of students. And they might be able to tell you a little bit about what special things they've done lately.
What special things they've done, like, first of all, we were in the right place, the right kind of, and we were completing a project out at the George Kilmer parking lot. And, uh, so we're rebuilding a out house out there. So, uh, while we were out there, there was a lady that had collapsed on the trail. And the, uh, local EMS didn't have enough volunteers that day. It happened to be a federal holiday that day, it was. And, uh, they asked us to come up and step up and help them carry this lady off the trail. And, uh, actually, I had four students, one of them working right now, so I wouldn't recognize him. But, uh, um, you know, these guys, they didn't ask why, they didn't ask where. Um, they just stepped up to the plate and, you know, they took care of business. They had no qualms with it, didn't ask how long was gonna be there. I think at one time, going up the trail, I did ask them where this lady might be, because none of us had any instructions on where she might be or if it was on the trail. So that was on the question I asked. But, uh, they just showed, uh, the, uh, the respect and the dignity of all Grand County students. And they're just outstanding buds to work with.
Good to hear. You want to introduce some of these guys on?
Yeah, y'all were standing there. Got David Layle right over here on your left, Zachary Cooper in the middle, and Kobe Adams on the left. Uh, Corey Lockler, he's working right now, so, uh, but I think we're gonna get his picture with them later today at the scope. Kobe, are you the one that used to ride my bus? Didn't recognize him.
Are you any better now than you were then? I've got a certificate that the Grand County Rescue Squad gave me to present to them this morning. And, uh, just like I say, three fine young men, and Corey also. It kind of just shows what kind of students we've got in Grand County schools all the way around. A lot of kids that care about other people and always willing to step in and help. But it says, uh, this is a certificate of appreciation for the volunteer services of RHS Carpentry Class. Your support and concern have made the Grand County Rescue Squad enhance its services to the community during the George Kilmer Carryout. It is signed by Keith Eller and by Jack Mills, as a squad manager, so appreciate you guys. I'll give this to Mr. Parham, and he put it up in his classroom.
Mr. Parham?
Yeah.
If you could gather this group together during lunch one day, I'll pay for lunch if you'll take them. See?
All right.
How about that?
That'd make sense.
That's a good plan.
Pretty good.
I bet you have to get it very tall, too.
Yeah, I think it was back to where it was going to circle back.
Well, we sure are proud of you guys and appreciate you stepping up and showing everybody what you guys are made of. It took a lot of courage and a lot of, uh, willpower, I guess, to carry somebody out of there, so we appreciate you.
You're real awesome, and that's what I appreciate, and I'd go back and, and, uh, I know you hate to go back to class right now, but I can shout away at you, I'll be up each, at some point when Mr. Parham's there, but appreciate you.
Are these guys ready to go back or ready to go?
Unless you just won't stay for the rest of the month. Mr. Parham, thank you.
Don't underestimate, don't underestimate, and talk about, um, an open house.
Well, you know what? If you want to, we can probably meet, can you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, all right.
I'll have to watch my class.
All right, well, we'll, uh, certainly, uh, keep you.
Okay, at this time, we are open for any public comments. Okay, just now, I guess we'll start with the senators and electors, so I guess Mr. Mansley will win.
All right, uh, we've got the state track meet coming up this Friday down at Old Town A and T in Greensboro. Have the regional on Saturday, and a lot of kids qualified to go along. I think we had a couple regional champions, our pole walker, uh, uh, and Anna Cole, she won. And then our four by eight relay team also won the regional championship. But about every kid that went to the region was qualified to move on. And our girls team needs a fifty-second lead, so had a good year and hope to have some good results this Friday down at the state meet. And I've just got several dates to go up, and I've dated this meeting before, and Miss Knight has these. But we do have the field day coming up on the sixteenth. We have lunch that morning about eleven to eleven-thirty. Uh, the board would like to come down, we'll be in Humber, we'd love to have you all to come take part in our field day and walk around and see what all the things the kids are doing.
What time is lunch?
Lunch is about eleven-thirty. And then on the seventeenth, May seventeenth, is prom. And that's at the RHS commons area again, and that's late to eleven. And then our academic banquet will be May the twenty-second. And Lamar Schuer, who I think is a nineteen eighty-one graduate from Oxford High School, he's the president and CEO of World Travel. He will be our guest speaker that night at the academic banquet. So if you can, we'd love to have all of you there. And then our athletic banquet will be following Tuesday on May the twenty-seventh. And the meal will start at six o'clock for both of those events, okay? And then our spring band concert is May the twenty-sixth on Monday night, and it's at seven o'clock. So again, I would invite you all to come out for that. So May is a busy month, and I guess by the next morning meeting, we'll be, uh, having final exams. And the school year will be just about ready to wind down. Our finals are on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth of May and the second, third, fourth of June. And Ms. Walsh is actually putting the finishing touches on our schedule for final exams right now. I think she's gonna be with Mr. Smith later today sometime. And that's been, uh, that's been a challenge this spring, just to be honest with you, with, uh, having to be in the computer labs to do our EOCs and, uh, all the common exams for the other teachers, so. And Mr. Parham, would you like him to go ahead and talk about the house a little bit right now? Uh, I was actually, went by Millcree yesterday afternoon, just drove by to look at the house, and he had to be there. And, uh, it's pretty much completed, they've got the, uh, the final on it on Friday. So he was there and opened up, I got to go through it, it's a beautiful home. It's gonna make somebody a wonderful house, and, uh, we're excited about them finishing that up in April seventh. I'll just let him talk about it, I think they're gonna have an open house sometime this month, so.
Planning an open house on next Tuesday, uh, May thirteenth, is that, is that planned? Um, it's, uh, the address is one ten Peyton Cooper Road. Uh, it's right across from Lennox Edwards' house. Uh, in Millcree Community, from eleven to two. And, uh, we're gonna be having lunch up there for anybody that's willing to come. Uh, this open house is showcased well, and shown well for this community. It's, it's gonna be an asset to our community. Uh, it also shows the hard work of the students. Hard work and determination and patience of these students. And it takes a couple of years. And sometimes, uh, we get there and cold and rice starts to hot, and they're always willing to, to give something, you know, even, even though they might be a little uncomfortable. But, uh, this house, uh, we've been able to train over thirty-five students with this one house on some aspects of construction. You know, not all of them have to nail signals down, not all of them have to put the windows in, but all of them have to do some, you know, to take and carry on for the rest of their life. So it's, it's a good program. Um, you know, some of these kids, uh, can save thousands of dollars throughout their lifetime with the skills they learn in this one program.
Could you tell me the street address one more time?
It's one ten Peyton D A T Cooper Road.
Is that near the house, the other one? Right side, okay, so I know who you're saying.
We're gonna have a couple of signs up, one on Telewood Road there that says open house, and then one right up there going right into the, uh, the red open house sign, so I think everybody's are fine.
Mr. Parham, I just want to know how much I appreciate what you do, and we have an excellent program.
Oh, yeah.
Finest, and I think that you directly contribute to that.
I appreciate it.
I think other than the skill set that you teach the kids, I think the ethics, the work ethics are probably the, one of the most important things they learn when they can make a program happen.
Yeah, um, you know, I'm stressed, show up on time, and give up a hundred and ten percent. So I just look at later and realize for the later, so, uh, but, uh, it's, it's a good program, really is.
And Cleveland is his next to God, and it's your, your classroom, and it's God. You can eat off the floor, I mean, it's clown.
Uh, we, uh, we require, require, and it's not hard. After they went to carpentry one, you know, you really don't have to say anything once they come back and do the other contractor courses. They know what's expected of you, so. The, uh, tools and equipment that's provided to us, we probably have more tools and equipment than most contractors do. So, uh, anything that I've ever needed or, or asked for, it's been provided from our school system. There's nothing less, no, other than a bullnose.
Keep going in that request.
I verbally requested it, verbally dropped it.
I would like to make a fort of wire too, that, uh, Miss Knight, she owes, I wonder if y'all know this one? She owes Mr. Parham a trip to the Bahamas.
It is my fault, we're gonna pay for it, I'll just, Mr. Max.
Uh, give a bullnose to the Bahamas.
But I'll, but I'm not gonna deny your request.
During the faculty luncheon, we got to have some scratch off tickets, and lo and behold, I scratched off some Bahama trips off mine. I don't know where they come from, but, uh...
Something just doesn't seem right. You win a trip to the Bahamas and we got a cup?
That's what I was saying.
Something a little different, don't you think?
I'll tell you, if you could have seen Kathy Rogers' face when Mr. Parham took that car up to her.
I tell you, Mr. Parham may not have a lawyer, but he definitely has a scan or something. That works.
Okay, Mr. Lawler?
Uh, just a few announcements, uh, we have kindergarten registration Friday. We only got about sixty to register, which is, now I don't know if it's usually is on registration, but I'm sure that'll come out over the summer, because I've had a number of people ask me, "Lawler, did you show up?" What we do, so, you know, that's gonna come up some. We are having another, because we didn't have many people to show up, another third grade parent night. Because, uh, Mr. Smith keeps sending me all these updates, the change on the third grade. I'm trying to keep that up before I can explicitly answer questions on the parent night, so I'll carry on with my other parent night. That's gonna be Monday the twelfth, May twelfth, from six to eight auditorium. We don't have anything scheduled or other than to answer questions that any parents may have to review briefly, you know, what third graders have to do if they don't ice the engine and so on. And so, uh, you know, we got that in paper this week, so you shouldn't have to worry about that very well. Uh, also, Ms. Stewart will probably queue, will probably explain more about this, but this is the first year I remember we've through the century twenty-one event, and we've offered summer camps to K, pre-K through six. Um, I might be wrong, does it happen right, Ms. Stewart?
K through six, we can't serve free.
Okay, I thought I got through.
Well, they'll be kindergarten.
Okay.
That when they, when they start.
Yeah, that's the first time we ever got off that in July, uh, so, you know, it's different weeks and so on, but. We also have, uh, summer school coming up, I'm guessing sometime in the summer, for how long, we don't know. Mr. Smith still don't know either, the third graders, so they, they fail.
But what, what, right now, the way it changes is six weeks, four days a week, three hours a day, he started last year.
Yeah, the long way in the office, which is terrible. Hopefully that'll change, but, uh, we got the energy test starting next week, tutoring starting next week. Uh, tutoring every day right now until the past day, actually, but, uh, we're gonna do some more of that next week. Uh, one thing that, uh, I don't, I don't think this has been mentioned before, and, uh, I'd just like to recognize some people that, uh, that went above and beyond, like this boy has done, uh, in the high school. But we had two incidents this year, that some of y'all have been aware of, that could have been fatalities. One of them was a preschool child named Jose Moreno, I think I pronounced that right. In a lunchroom, he got choked on a hot dog, and order a number of staff, act immediately. And, um, it was a scary situation, I wouldn't, that school would. And, uh, but we had, you know, because of the well-trained and caring people that we had, they immediately stood charged our male and a number of others, I'm missing some names, and I may not hope to leave anyone out, but we also got another incident of a boy in EC class named Nelson Jimenez that had a seizure and quit breathing three or four times. That was this school year. And EMS was, got tied up in some way, and we had people there working with him. And by the time EMS took him out, he was, he was in pretty good shape, and that's, we were really lucky. That could have really been, you know, a tough situation. But some of the folks that were involved were Melba and Jeff and Colin and Diane Wiggins, Officer Wiggins, Laura Walden, and all her assistants, lunchroom staff, the maid cable, Loma Lovelace, Linda Cross, and, and EMS guys that were there, and I'm sure there have been other people involved too. But without their training and reactions, you know, we could have been too short with some students this year, so, yeah, appreciate it.
Not to mention the little turpentine boy that run and got helped when base night was down.
Oh, yes, yeah, but that was just last week.
Yeah.
Yeah, she passed out. Scared him to death, he, he did, he had to go do, you know, what he needed to do, find someone, yeah.
Mr. Lawler, you doing, so, middle school?
Uh, teachers are reviewing, working hard to get students prepared for having, um, finals and AOGs and MSLs. Mr. White wanted me to, I'm offering invitation for any of y'all that'd like to come down in Proctor. So it's, uh, it's kind of scheduling and all that, so, um, that's kind of the main thing that's going on right now as far as in the classroom. Uh, eighth grade is going on a coach trip. I talked to, um, Mr. Redd last night, and he said everything was going well, so that trip's going well. Our character education classes are coming to an end, I think the last one's gonna finish up this week, that's going well. We've had wise guys and smart girls, I don't know if that's gonna continue, and, uh, Mr. Ken comes in and does, um, his, um, character education program. And then there's, uh, been a lady from Cherokee who's come by and done, um, a thing on domestic violence. It's been really good, it's been in the classroom, so that's, um, that's going well this year. Track team, our spring sports track team did well, represented the school well. Our baseball and softball teams will finish up next week, and it looks like softball team has a good chance if they finish strong with being conference champs or league co-champs, so, and they've represented the school well, um, on and off the field. Uh, we've got a spring dance for Friday, May the twenty-third. It's, um, our final dance of the year, so, um, that'll be, that'll be your kind of outside or in the commons area, depending on the weather. And then I've got one field trip, you may wait till next year, go ahead and, so. Okay, steward council, we usually take them to Six Flags in Georgia, so there's a thing in town the last few years. I think that's it. Thank you.
It's a day trip on my six.
Yes, it's a day trip, yes.
And where is it to, uh, Six Flags in Georgia?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Moody, you have any thoughts?
I don't think, okay.
Ms. Hall, please?
Just a few things, we, uh, did the kindergarten registration, we have seven, there's students, they're coming in, they're all numbers. Uh, Cherokee language has a new Cherokee language app that they are running on the iPads and in the classroom on the iPad cards, and that's working out real well. Uh, middle school peace champion got twenty-seven bites of trish in two hours, covering two miles on their adopted highway on Natoa. They've also made an anti-bullying survey for grades six through twelve, and plan an anti-bullying rally. And last week, I think, you know, the high school toured Oak Ridge, the national outdoor campus located in Oak Ridge, Tennessee. And that is a terrific place where anybody interested in math, or really good in math, or computers, or science, it's a great place, and heavens to Christ.
I asked her when she came back if they did a spot, she said no.
But they talk about this computer language, and all these computers are, I mean, real changing from Kraken to Titan or something. I mean, they need something new, but, okay, the way you do nanos or something, all these thousands of numbers, you know, going, oh my gosh. All these thousands of numbers, you know, going, oh, my gosh. Day of caring is May the fifteenth. That's when they go into a house and work out for another person out in Silver. Tribal council awards are May sixteenth. We're taking thirty-two students. Chiefs awards are May twentieth, and we'll take six students to that. We take a boy and a girl from the sixth grade, a boy and a girl from the eighth grade, and a boy and a girl from the twelfth grade. We did receive a summer arts camp grant from Cherokee Preservation. And we should start on June the sixteenth with fifteen children. This year, we're doing quilting, river came out, speeding, and honey circle baskets.
Did I leave anybody out? Field trip replaced. We have middle school, so Mr. Madison?
I've got, there are field trips coming up actually, and I have a reminder from this night. Do you have one of the Hazel Creek trips? We have Billy and I last year stayed in the group camping in the Hazel Creek. And that will be the weekend of the prom, which will be May the sixteenth. They're gonna leave at lunch there at field day and go on over there at high end. And they'll be staying the night of the sixteenth and the seventeenth. And the reason that, I mean, we haven't put it on prom weekend, that's gonna cut his numbers down some. But his daughter plays Travis softball, and that's the only weekend that, that he was able to work out together. So, I told him, if those kids were ready to do that, then that'd be fine. And then Mr. Knight also will have a trip scheduled that we could, he could actually be approved with the next committee. But it's for June the fifth. And he and Mr. Brooks are gonna pay the group of kids to Six Flags. And that's any kid that has not been in any trouble at high school throughout the year that wants to go. They buy the wrong ticket. It's actually after the last day of school. So, but we wanted to do it before graduation on the, on the sixth. Because we've got a little bit of, anyway, put the seniors for the next day. It's always been real well. And he's done this several years to Mr. Knight have, so a trip to Six Flags and a trip to Bay Harbor. I'm just happy we've got teachers that will take our responsibility to do both of those for the year. And now, excuse me, in no reason would it charge the sixteenth because we're gonna have a lot of middle school going on another trip too. So, that's another reason we charge that.
Ms. Stewart?
We have a request from the after school for three separate trips. We have two elementary and one middle school. The first for the elementary is to waterworks in Hagerford, Tennessee. And their end of year school trip for our after school students. I think their requirement is twenty-plus days in the after school program this year. And then we have got middle school also is gonna do waterworks in Hagerford, Tennessee for third end of year field trip. And we have a summer program, field trip to Rose Mountain Territory in O'Hare, Georgia. That they're gonna plan for sometime in July. They'll do it for the weeks. Be for the rising third grade students that we have. That'll be that trip. The dates are May twentieth for the elementary and June the fourth for the middle school. And we don't have an exact date, a little in July for the summer program trip.
Mr. Green?
Always get forward about activity at the podium this time of year, end of fiscal year. In your folders there, I've got a couple packets. I've got budget amendments and also the expenditure reports. I'll go over the budget amendments first, and I'll go through these quickly. But I will speak in a little detail about some of the significant budget amendments. On the first page, we have budget amendments for the state public school fund. And the third section, if you'll scan down, we've got a budget amendment there for PRC thirteen and PRC fourteen, which is a CTE program. We had one point seven five months of employment that will be unused. We transferred that from PRC thirteen into PRC fourteen. Result of that is ten thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars that we plan to use for non-capitalized equipment. Can I put this flip over to the next page, please? This is a budget amendment to the local current expense fund. Specifically, this is a budget amendment for PRC eight thirty-five, which is timber receipts. The original budget for this PRC is always ninety thousand dollars. It's conservative. We did receive a total amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-two cents. And you'll see in the body of this budget amendment, the last section there, the last entry, that additional amount of approximately eighty-seven thousand. And I'll just go through some of the line items. If you'll look in the debit columns, get about a third of the way down. I've increased budget expenditure there for electricity of thirty-three thousand, water, ten thousand, propane, seven thousand, two hundred and fifty. And approximately thirty-eight thousand for fuel and twenty-one thousand dollars for maintenance supplies. On the next page, these are budget amendments for the federal fund. The only one I want to mention there is for PRC sixty. We received additional funding there of nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. We plan to use the majority of that for workshop expense and supplies and materials. Next budget amendment is for the capital outlay fund. This budget amendment reflects the transfer that we made out of the state treasures investment fund into the capital outlay fund. To use for expenditures on the RHS baseball field. And the amount there is four hundred thousand dollars. The next budget amendment is for Fund Seven, and this is Impact Eight. If you'll scan to the bottom, the last entry there, you'll see that we've got additional amount of revenue of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. And I'll go over just a few of these, these entries. But that, that voucher that we received was a real shock and awe. Because without that, it was very possible that by the end of the year, we would be using fund balance to finish the year up for our total expenditures. And what I mean, the total expenditures without this could possibly have been more than seventy that we received in a year. And we would've dipped into previous year's fund balance to make the budget work. But that three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, real shocking mark. And I'll go through some of the line items here that I've increased. If you'll scan down about halfway through the budget amendment. I've increased electricity by seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, propane, twenty thousand, water, thirty thousand. Janitorial supplies, twenty-five thousand. And then maintenance supplies, forty thousand. And you can see the rest of the body there, how significant these increases are. That three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, it's gonna be a good habit for this year. The last budget amendment, this is Fund Eight. I'll go over each, each of these. First section there is PRC six forty-nine. This is a TV grant that comes from Cherokee County Schools. We use that for the wise guys and the smart girls. And that's five thousand dollars. We plan to use two thousand for field trips and three thousand for supplies and materials. Next budget amendment is PRC four thirteen. This is NC pre-K. And we've actually had a reduction in the funding there of three thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. And I think that's based on the attendance. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's like a per, per child, per month attendance. If they miss one in five days, they don't get to come up to that one.
And then the last one, PRC six fifty-eight. This is a step-up diabetes grant. We received seven hundred and fifty dollars for this year. Plan to use those for supplies and materials. Any questions about the budget amendments? Okay, expenditure reports. If we'll just look at the second page, I'll go to the variances here and there. And based on these budget amendments that I have presented to you, I keep these in. And this will reflect in the variances. So, please, I'll let you go back and reverse the budget amendments. The first, the first, first column there, the variance in fund, in local current expense fund. The variance there appears to be over by thirteen percent. These variances are based on the assumption that we'll have an equal twelve months of expenditures per month. But the fines and forfeiture money that we received is twenty-one thousand, property is twenty-one thousand dollars. That's already spent. The timber receipts that we've received, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, that's already spent. So, that, that skews that variance a little bit. But we will not be over budget by the end of fiscal year on local current expense fund or any fund. But the next column, Fund Seven, this is Impact Eight. It appears to be over budget by nineteen percent. But if you will scan up about eight or nine lines, that transfer of four hundred thousand dollars out of Impact Eight. That was in a STIF account. That skews this variance somewhat. But again, that is revenues from a previous fiscal year, so it does affect that variance. Next, Eight, this fund, we account for our grants. We're under budget by one percent. State Public School Fund, it says zero there. We're out of party. It's actually, we're under budget by half a percent. Let's just round it up. Federal fund, we're under budget by thirty-two percent. Child nutrition, we're under budget by seventeen percent. And capital outlay as a result of the budget amendment that I key now already with that transfer to run less by twenty-seven percent.
Just a couple things. Miss Mike will be bringing to you a bunch session. We've got two employees that are resigning at the end of the year. Under positive circumstances, that always sounds bad when I say employees resign. She will also be bringing to you some names for volunteers and also some, some of workers for the child nutrition program. And I'd like to add too, I appreciate the board and everybody, like these boys that carried it, the lady out of Woods. The attitude, because I got a feeling in the water areas, that would've been a negative thing actually. That would've been, you know, how did I reuse these big old boys to do that? And did you get a formal sign? Did you get another eye? I appreciate the way you work with them and gratitude about everything.
Ms. Matt, locational rehabilitation contract.
Yeah, this was gonna be a slipper, and she went to get dresses on and her back. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure if she's straightened up enough now that we sit down. This is, this is an annual contract that we have with the department or the division of vocational rehabilitation services. We share a employee with Cherokee in Clay County. Our part of this contract is eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And it goes toward our students getting services, vocational rehabilitation evaluations, and transition services in the hospital.
Any questions on this? Okay, Miss Moody.
This is not what we did about the community eligibility. I don't know if you have been hearing anything about it. But basically what it is, is section one oh four, not so poor, I'm sorry. Section one oh four of the Healthy Hundred Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten was amended for the National School Lunch Act. It was to provide an alternative to household eligibility applications for free reduced processed meals. And how part do local education agencies or districts? The purpose of this was to improve access to nutritious meals for students in high poverty areas at no cost to students. The way this works, the students that you get to count are with the students that are directly certified through food stamps or temporary assistance for needy families, foster children, runaway migrant children. You can count those towards your free reduced. Anybody that is free and reduced on paper application, you do not get to count. Which is unfortunate because if you have sixty-two point five percent free and reduced in your school, which we have more than that. Then everybody can eat for free and they'll pay the federal reimbursement of, this year was three or more, next year probably more. For every meal that you serve. But because you can't count your paper applications, we fall short of that. We only have like forty, I think it's forty-one point two six percent. Which means that they're only gonna pay us the full rate for reimbursement for those, that percentage of meals. And the rest is a combination that they pay. So, I did the math, and this is the figures. I mean, it would be great if we could everybody could have free lunch. That would be wonderful. But if we do it, which we do have the option. And the good thing about it is if we don't do it this year and our free reduced rates come up some, we can always do it next year. But this is the amount of money that we make now, planning additionally. And if we do it, this is what we would make. So, that shows you what our loss would be financially.
So, if it's, if they don't pay at the local school?
The school pays it out of mom's bills. And it's a lot, it's like a hundred thousand dollars.
And the reason I thought this was important, I heard from you, this is a federal initiative sent down to the states. And it's turning into our, our federal dollars, our federal grants.
Title one.
Title one, and.
And they get all their information, their poverty, they will offer the free reduced applications. And so, you won't be able to use those anymore.
It's just, it's just a new way of doing business possibly. And if we were to have enough direct certification students, then it would work out.
It would be wonderful if we could get enough, you know, the sixty, sixty-two point five is the magic number. And that means everybody eats for free and they pay the biggest reimbursement for everybody. But if you don't have that, they just pay for the full reimbursement for that forty-one point two six percent. And then the rest of it's just a combination. However, they figure it out.
Now, I just wanted her to share that with you because I'm always with things coming out about it. And I want, you know, a little bit of information. And although it sounds good, somebody's still gonna pay.
They're, yeah, they're a catch.
Until we qualify, but we'll keep looking for your.
You know, yeah, we can check every year, you know, yeah. Like the more people we can get, well, this sounds awful, but I guess the more people we have on the students, you know, is just terrible, but.
Well, and, and you know, and the flip side is, is the lesson that, that we don't qualify. That means there may be more people trying to work and have opportunities to work. So, but we don't know what the future of our county is. Hopefully it'll be positive. But, but if we were to follow our circumstances, this is an opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, but if we do it right now, that would be the kind of money that we'd be, you know, that's pretty big money. It weighs a hundred and thirty-something pounds.
Hundred and forty-four, yeah, approximately.
All right, that's it.
And Miss Moody, we have to do a bake sale.
I'd have to be doing a lot of that.
Oh, yeah, she did some.
Yeah, she's fast to aim for, is clear.
Cannot deny it.
How much did you earn?
Small schools funding, Ms. Matt?
Yes, and then, Mr. Green may wanna step in for some of this. But this year, our state budget, one of the biggest lines that we received from the state is our small schools funding. That really is a lifelong for us. Like, like Impact Eight is for federal funding, uh, small schools funding is for us. And each year, that, there's a formula. It has to do with the number of students in the system. And then the smaller systems in the state, they have a lot of amount of money. Last year, in the general assembly, they wanna change the formula. And it amounts to a pretty good sized cut for us. This year, in our, in our state budget, in our planning allotment, it looks like a hundred and seventy thousand dollar item decrease just in that one. So, I've been on numerous, and Miss Stewart is, is joining me on a couple of them, numerous calls. We have our system, our small schools consortium has an advocate that, that we hire, that advocates for us in the general assembly. for us in the General Assembly, and we've talked with him lately. He hopes that he has had his job well enough to have these cuts restored, hopefully help him get the budget renewed on that. What he has recommended in the school boards that you choose to do is assign a resolution that would, with your support of restoring that small school system to the county. So that's what this resolution is doing, to talk about how it would affect county schools. And for us, it's at least $70,000 plus cut per year. We're, mostly our small schools is tied up in salaries. So, I'll bring that to you as an action item.
Baseball field update this month.
Just have some pictures in your board packet. They're moving right along on that. There, one thing that I did want to bring out this month is, and you can't really tell you as much from my picture, but the top one is, they're really having to raise that elevation. And so I thought I'd bring that out, that they're having to holler in four acres of dirt to raise the elevation of the baseball field. And so, but they're doing it. They're very busy, and I'll give Mr. Mathis.
Yeah, they're very close with Dredon right now, too.
And they've gone out.
Should finish the dirt part pretty quick.
So if you haven't been over there, I encourage you to go over and see, they've got the, all the pipeline in, and Mr. Walsh should ask the question of, the way that it's, the word is plumbed, but the way that it's designed is, is for our main baseball field, but it leads out to where we can expand, then add on our other fields later. So the groundwork for that is, is ready to be adopted, so we'll do it, expand. So I'm pleased with progress with that.
More education policies for our grade.
You have five policies in front of you. The first one is closed section. The required changes from the current policy is just the open, what we call the open meters law, and the exception to the open meters law, closed sections of public school communities and school equipment. However, one thing that is not public is the school safety components. In addition to what chapter 133 says, there's also another exception, and the school safety components are not required to be disclosed in the public. So that's a good clarification. Testing and assessment. My sense, Mr. Rex, there's some major changes from your old policy 3410, and when you review this, basically it adds, they've added some language about the purpose of the testing, which is that the diagnostic tests and assessments provide measures of student learning as well as evaluating educator effectiveness, and that comes with your change in evaluations. A and B were separate requirements under your old policy. A and B has been combined, and your superintendent, the principals, shall determine how these all sorts of such measures will be used to determine a student's final grades, provided that it must be at least 20 percent of the grade, all the final exams, in-force testing, CTE is a minimum 20 percent of the student's grade. Now, your superintendent can give a greater weight to it, and that's the discretion of the superintendent. There's one thing to look under, under A is, and this is where Rex may be helpful, but if you have CTE students who earn a credential, these CTE students will not be required to take the CTE post-assessment in the course.
That's good.
Okay, and that's how you want it, because the board can require the post-assessment.
But, but the way that I would personally would do that would be that they met the requirements to get that credential, and that would, that would be a dedication.
An example of that would be like in the emergency phone panels, a student that earns their CNA, then they would not be required to be tested further than that CNA license exam, so if they earned a credential, so I think that's okay. And the final exam, in the past, we counted finals as 25 percent until the last semester, and when the state changed to 20, we also made it 20 percent. I feel like that's more than fired up and really hurt a kid's grade, you know, a lot. And some students don't pass as well, so I think 20 percent is out with it.
But still holds a student accountable for that test, so they'll take it serious.
That's correct, yeah.
One of the things that 3410 does admire, when I'm reading what the General Assembly did, is that it prohibits local final exams and courses without a state required assessment. Okay. And of course, you're not teaching to the exam. I mean, that, that's really, that's a, that's a tough one. But your hands are tied to any local final exams or courses.
Ms. Smith, go ahead and go on, May. One thing that we, we can be aware of, and of course we are, but you said the board can be aware of, and the last sentence in A says that, once the school system has fully transitioned to online assessments, then, um, to keep the board informed of the resources or measures needed. Well, we are looking at a group of computers right now that are, that are going, going and so we're going to have, have to do some investing soon in computers.
And if I can add, we, we have the resources to meet, as of right now, what is required of online. I know online history, they're doing an emergency installation of the computer lab beside the Christmas field, so we can try to get that ready within the next two weeks, so we don't have to use any, as many laptops. Laptops have a tendency to do some funny things when you're trying to test on them, so, so we are meeting the state requirements, but if they were to up those requirements, which they want to do, they've wanted to do that for years, have everything online, there's no way right now. But, but we're in the same shape as in your situation, there's just no way.
And we, we do rotate, we keep our computers, you know, rotating out, but it's just we're to the point that we're going to have to have a big rotation soon.
And even, there's a lot of room on our campus that houses enough computers to test every kid starting in the third grade at the same time. I mean, it's just logistically impossible, but again, I mean, we're inside of...
And I feel like we're probably going to check this.
It's hard as it wants to.
Even in high school, we have three exams that have to be online, and that's biology, English 2, and math 1. And for us, that's tough when we have, a lot of our classes may have 26 or 27 students in the class, but we don't have a computer lab with that many computers. Whereas the one on the side of the cafeteria, our newest lab only has 20 computers. So some of those places will have pullouts that come out, have separate saving and things like that, which will look a bit faster than laptops, a lot of them. And that's, that's, that's not the best situation, because if your Wi-Fi goes down, or not good connectivity or something, then, you know, the test locks down or shuts off, so.
And they're just harder to manipulate.
Yes, and they all, without a kid without an actual keyboard, and so.
Just a random layout here, Ms. Smith.
No, that's fine, no, that's important, because 3410 does substantial changes. If you look at under course, A, course units required, there was a committee of school that spent a lot of time on revising this policy, and, but there is, the General Assembly authorized, but you're not required to do it, that students also have the opportunity to meet course unit requirements without completing the regular period of classroom instruction by demonstrating mastery of the course material in accordance with policy 3420. So, which is promotion and accountability. But the General Assembly changed, you've changed policy 3460 to meet your requirements and your additional course requirements, and that, that's in there. Your, your revised policy's in there. And David, you'll work on that. The only thing that's changed is that, are you going to allow students to have the opportunity to meet course unit requirements without completing all classroom instruction by demonstrating mastery?
It would be, give a student the opportunity to take a test to get credit for the class, and we have never done that in the past. And I don't know that country would have that many board decisions. I think 3440 is all right. It's a big process. I know there's some school systems that are trying that, and they're having a very, very low percentage of kids actually pass, and it is very rough.
If you don't want to do, it has to do with, I guess, too, a lot, well, with policy 3420 is promotion and accountability, and there's that acceleration, and maybe the board wants to look at the, what's required for acceleration, which is what your superintendent's working on, format that you add this to 3460. Okay. If the General Assembly offered that, but if you want, if you want to just keep 3460 like it is until you take care of it, acceleration, or skipping a grade, or you want to think about that one. Voluntary shared leave, 7540. Please note that you revised your policy substantially in June 2013. When the General Assembly changed policy 7540, you were already in compliance, and yours has...
We don't have that.
7540? You don't have it in there?
I don't have it. Do y'all?
Okay. Just to note what the General Assembly has for required changes, you already have it in the policy. My recommendation is don't change 7540, which exceeds minimum requirements. 7811, plans for growth and improvement of licensed employees. The reason there are required changes in this one is that 115C 325 is still alive and well for July 1, 2018, for a certain group of employees. Okay. Then you have your new 115C 325.11, which is the employment of teachers and administrators. Point 1 is the new statute that takes effect for, at July 1, 2014, for your other, for your 75 percent of your employees. So that's the reason for these changes, because you have one statute, well, you have two statutes that are in, in effect, and, but you're still required to apply your improvement plans, goal, goal plans for career status teacher and non-career status teachers, even though these statutes switch out. You know, they run parallel to 20, till June 30, 2018. You're still required to do your growth plans with your non-career status, because you have, you're going to have a large group of non-career staff starting July 1, 2014. Okay. And those are the reasons for the required changes in 7811. And that concludes those five topics.
Ms. Matthews, so you're selling the RDA's Culinary House.
Yes, during lunch session, we'll discuss how we're going to look forward with the sale of that house, and it's the school's responsibility, instead of RDA to take the lease of the sale of the house, and we'll discuss the next steps.
Okay, resolution of authorized use of activity buses.
In your board packet, your folder there, you have a copy of this resolution. Again, it's a resolution authorizing use of activity buses. We actually adopted this resolution on March 3, 2009, so that St. Col Valley Center could use our activity buses at that time. And this resolution states that we will adopt this on an annual basis. We have not, we haven't had the need. We do have the need this year with the 21st Century Learning Center Grant, the after-school grant, it has a summer school component. St. Col Valley Center does have a summer camp that is a week long, and they will need use of one of our activity buses. So this is the first step that will allow them to do that and to complete their summer camp. If this resolution is adopted, then the next step would be, there's an agreement that we have to sign with them, where they will provide liability insurance for the occupants of the activity bus and the bus itself, and also they'll have to provide workers' compensation insurance for their employees. But again, that's part of the agreement that we will sign with them if this resolution to use activity buses is adopted. Any questions?
Will they also provide the drivers, or will...
It'll have to be one of our employees.
It'll have to be one of ours.
Right.
And it would be only, and just to put this out, this is not from, this is not just that Atlanta will use the bus, it'd be for our, our students that are attending that summer.
That's right.
Because it's a separate summer care.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, we have a motion to go into lunch session.
Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143 31811A3 and 143 31811C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of considering personnel property matters as defined in and allowed by North Carolina General Statute 143 31811A6 and North Carolina General Statute 1156 342.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll play it.